Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Thank you. I welcome you to our monthly meeting. We're here to accomplish the business of the schools and the sake of the students. We do want to hear from our citizens and their time for the public comment prior to the action items with this agenda. We ask that speakers identify themselves with their home district. We also ask that comments are limited to three minutes in order to provide equity to all speakers and to ensure our meeting is responsible and speakers responsible in length, reasonable in length, excuse, responsible too. The moderator will ask you to conclude your remarks as the time has elapsed. If you have any questions during the session, you may ask them for clarification, a school board member or the administrator after the after the meeting is adjourned. Thank you for coming tonight. Can I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Seconded and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Hearing none. Adopted. A special recognition, Dr. Rimbley.
Yes, as it was the will and pleasure of the board, we are honoring tonight our own Rappahannock County PTO as the V S B A Business Honor Roll recipients. So at this time, we're going to ask the members of the PTO who are receiving this award to come up and receive your certificate and get a picture. We're not doing this alone. Kind of are. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Would you now like to have Camden Shanks, our school board liaison, come and give us a report? All the exciting things are going to go on this month and next month maybe.
Hello, good evening.
There you go.
Okay, our seniors just completed their senior trip from Orlando in Cocoa Beach, Florida. We are prepared for prom, which is April the 30th at the at the Bowling Green Country Club and after prom is at the high school. Tomorrow is our second Renaissance Day of the year. It is this, it is for students who have no zeros in their grades and have completed the work for the quarter. Trust me when I say this, they've all been working extra hard for a fun-filled day out in the sun. Students that attend the Mountain Mystic Governor's School will be having their pending coming up soon. I didn't exactly get an accurate date, but I'm pretty sure it was either maybe today or soon. Students are looking forward to enjoying the weather and the upcoming activities toward toward the end of the year. With the temperature rising, students need to be aware of the dress code policy. Our policy will be enforced. Thank you.
You got it. There you go. Thank you. As a player, yes. I had my ticket. I'm second row on the time. Donations.
Hey, I have a lot to read. Rappahannock Youth Basketball League donated $575 for the cost of student entry tickets to basketball quarterfinal and semifinal games. All Hands Enterprises donated $1,075 for high school athletics. Tanya Cox donated $100 for the class of 2022 Krispy Kreme fundraiser. Matthew Nieswanger donated $1,000 to the senior banquet. The following donations are to purchase raffle prizes for senior week. The Unitarian Universalist of the Blue Ridge, $100. Doctor and Mrs. Brooke Miller, $100. Chester Gap Sellers, $100. Glen Hill United Methodist Church, $50. Appleton Campbell donated a Keurig. The following donations are for the senior trip. B and B Signal, $50. A M H Print Group, $750. Print Mail Communications, $1,000. Lenny Janot, $100. Williams Tree Service, $250. Chuck Jenkins, $1,000. The following donations are for the after prom party. Rose Hill Veterinary Practice, $200. The PTO, $1,000. Walker Jones, $250. Valley Eye Clinic, $50. Early's Carpet, $50. Warranted Toyota, $300. The Rappahannock Sheriff's Children's Foundation, $810. The Ennet Little Washington, $250. Country Chevrolet, $500. Luray Caverns, $500. Glen Hill Methodist Church, $100. Three Blacksmiths, $200. CCLC, $50. The Rappahannock County Lions Club, $500. Fairly Farm Bed and Breakfast, $25. And B and B Signal, $500.
The generosity of our community is phenomenal. You didn't run a total on that, did you?
No, but I can give it to you.
Whatever. It's just fantastic.
It's impressive.
Yeah.
Yeah, very nice. And that's not the end of it. We got another month.
I mean, very generous.
Very generous. And thank you to all the people that she talked to. Can I have adoption of the minutes for March 5, school board retreat, March 8, school board meeting, and the public hearing, March 22. Do I hear a motion? Who said moved and seconded? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Motion's approved. Verification of bills. Yes, I did look at all the bills and we're in really quite good shape. Do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda of donations, warrants, attendance report, and homeschool?
So moved.
Been moved and seconded, Mr. Rubin? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Hearing none. Motion's approved. Report from the superintendent. This is all good, good report.
Yes, it is. And for this good, good report, I'd like to bring up Dee Byers from our Pierce Group Benefits group, and she's going to share again the benefits strategy that this board and I have been looking at for quite some time to start a transition for a more sustainable benefits package that actually does quite a bit more for our employees in the long run and also for the county as a whole. So Dee, I'm going to pull up your presentation if you want to go ahead and give an intro.
Absolutely. Good afternoon. My name is Dee Byers. I am a benefit.
Dee, could you hold that thing up just a minute? There you go.
Made me feel like I'm back at church when I was nine. So, good afternoon. My name is Dee Byers. I am the benefit consultant at Pierce Group Benefits. I work with Rappahannock County Public Schools on their benefits for. Saying we've been working really hard on trying to make sure that your insurance is sustainable. As we know, insurance continue to rise and Rappahannock has been very fortunate in the last couple of years to not sustain like increases or even receive decreases based on, you know, wellness and, you know. Fortunately, this year you saw an increase in the health insurance and that's something that it happens on a cycle. It's not anything that's out of the norm. What is out of the norm is Rappahannock being stable for so many years. So every year I would get the renewal, I would call Anthem just to make sure because I wasn't even sure that that was even possible to have that many rate holes in a running road. So this year, like I said, unfortunately, you did incur a rate increase and you'll talk, I'll talk a little bit about that when I start the presentation. And because of that rate increase, there has been some measures put in place to make sure you can sustain the great. Attention and to make sure that you have access to care when needed for family and dependents. So with that being said, I'll start the presentation and just to kind of give you an overview, what Pierce Group Benefits, we are a hired consulting firm. What we do is we take a look at all the benefits that Rappahannock County Public Schools offer to their staff and their employees and their dependents. So everything from medical, dental, vision, the worksite benefits, like your cancer policies, life insurance, accident, we look at that every year just to make sure that you're getting the best bang for your buck. Because the thing is, like I said, insurance and benefits are always expensive, but we always want to check out into the marketplace to make sure that we have the most appropriate book of insurance for your employees. So we take a look at that every year. So that's a suite of products that we offer. Currently, Rappahannock County Public Schools is with Anthem, which is the local choice, which is a great benefit to have because your medical, your dental, and your vision is all in one place. And that way it makes it easier for employees to use because it's one ID card and you get bumble pricing because it's all with one carrier. So we'll take a little bit about the renewal history. And as I was saying earlier, you've had rate holes in a decrease in the last four years, three years. With the rate hole, that means that there's rates stayed the same. You didn't have to make any. Actually got a rate decrease, which is never heard of in the insurance world. I got a book of about 13 clients. You were one of two that got a rate rate decrease last year. And then, like I said, this year you see things are starting to open back up. And this is just a rebound from the pandemic. Everybody knows what happened. Everybody was kind of shut in. Nobody could go anywhere. Now people are back up out, you know, re re scheduling their. And then, of course, you had a couple of high-cost claimants that kind of worked their way in there as well. That resulted in like. Conjectured as increases over the year. So in the year 2020, which is the pandemic, when everything changed, you spent about $963,000 for insurance costs. That's going to be claims, administrative costs like customer service, the discount, and being a part of Anthem Network. Last year, your claims almost doubled to $1.8 million. So that's where you see the increase coming at a 10 and a half percent. This year, year to date, you're already expected to spend $1.5 million. So you're kind of already there and we still got to get to October. So that's where we're seeing that we got to do something different with the plan to make sure that, one, we're being cost effective and, two, making sure that we maintain the benefits that we have for employees can get the care that they need. With that $1.5 million, I don't want it to scare you, but I do want to say the realities of that is that in that $1.5 million, with you being with the local choice and Anthem, they do cap it at $135,000 per claim. So what that does is it helps level out the cost of insurance. And that's the great thing about being in the local choice is that one group doesn't bear the burden for a bad year. And that's what's happening with Rappahannock right now. You're having a high-cost claim year, but they're able to balance that out with that $1.5 billion. So you see the 10 and a half percent increase versus if you were not with the local choice, it could be anywhere from 20 to 30 percent increase. So that's where you see the benefit of being with the local choice. So one of the things we talked about, you offered three plans right now. You offer two plans that are traditional co-pay plans, and you also offer a high deductible health plan. I don't think employees understand or really realize what that plan can do for them and how it can actually help them. But the high deductible health plan, what that means is that you have an insurance plan that you can choose that doesn't have copays. And I know that's scary for some people. What we've decided to do is that we will partner with Rappahannock County Schools to make sure that when during open enrollment, we actually educate employees on this plan that's already being offered that they can take advantage of today and tell them how we can help them. One of the great things about a high deductible health plan is that you also get access to what's called a health savings account. In that health savings account, you actually can put money into this bank account pre-tax, and then when you spend the money out for qualified medical expenses, you spend it tax-free as well. Now, you have an FSA, which is a flexible spending account, and I know I'm talking alphabet soup, so I'll try to go a little bit slower. With the FSA, everybody's familiar that when you put money in, you have to spend it or you lose it at the end of the year. With the HSA, if you put money in and you don't spend it by the end of the year, it rolls over to the next year. So you get to keep that money in your account as long as you want to have that account. The other great thing about the HSA or the health savings account is that it is a bank account and the employee owns that bank account. So if the person decides to leave Rappahannock County Public Schools, they take that money with them because it is a bank account. So Rappahannock County Public Schools can put money into that account as, you know, hey, we're helping you out with the deductible, and the employee can also put money into that account. The great, other great thing about having is that if employees choose that plan, the premiums are cheaper than the other two traditional plans. And because the premium per month of what they're paying out of their paychecks is cheaper, the employee has an opportunity to save money during the month on their paycheck every pay period. And Rappahannock County Public Schools also get an opportunity to save money because the premiums are cheaper. Now, the great thing, I said, other thing about HSA is it does take some education. Pierce Group Benefits is here to make sure we provide that education and those tools. We have a staff of about eight employees that are licensed insurance agents that may answer phone from 8:00 to 5:00, money through Friday, that employees can call. We have videos that we can queue up to send out to employees to teach them how to use their health savings account. And we also have different emails that we can send out to give them information ahead of time before open enrollment to get them prepared to be able to understand this insurance plan. Now, like I said, you can use these HSAs or FSAs for qualified medical expenses like copays, deductibles, dental, vision, anything you use an FSA for, you can use an HSA. The great thing about HSA, you don't have to try to spend it all before the end of the year. Because if you don't spend it, you can roll it over every year until you turn age 65. Once you turn age 65, you can use that money for whatever without a penalty. So it's kind of like another retirement vehicle for employees if they want to use it that way as well. And they can use it for anybody on their plan or any of their dependents. So if you scroll up to the next slide. We're looking at a three-year strategy. So you currently offer the high deductible health plan right now, and Rappahannock County Public Schools proposing or suggesting that they donate $500 to that HSA account, that health savings bank account. So any employee that elect that high deductible health plan, they will automatically get $500 in their bank account to help them cover that deductible. Because remember, I said that plan doesn't have copays. So when they go to the doctor, they will pay like the $130, $140, but they will have that $500 on a debit card that they can use to help pay that amount out. Now, the employee can also put money in if they want to, pre-tax, and they can do payroll deduction on that. And so that money will build on top of that account as well, but that $500 will help them get started. So that was the initial. Our goal this year is to get a 10% participation. Right now, you have a whopping four people currently in the plan without any type of contribution or help. And they've been in it for, I think, about three or four years. I kind of look back at the history. So they kind of in it. They like it. They're using it. But we're trying to get at least 10% additional people into the plan. If that's the case, we feel like we probably could do a premium savings of about $1,200 per person that they would be able to save per month just for switching over from a K A 500, which is a co-pay plan, or the $1,000 plan into the high deductible health plan. And then, of course, year two, we'll try to set that same goal of 10%, which will be another $1,200 per person. And then, year three, we will sunset to 500 and offer the 1,000 in the high deductible health plan and get another 10%. So if you flip to the next slide, we're estimating that, these are just estimates, the first year you can save about $6,000 by getting people to switch over. The next year, about $33,000. And then by the third year, you can save up to $76,000. And again, these are estimates just based on people moving from plan to plan. Again, we don't know. We hope the education will be enough to get enough to understand how it can help. It won't be for everybody, but it will be help some people, you know, save some money and be able to have that fund to start rolling over that amount of money. So if you go to the next one, so again, employees can save about $25 per month on premiums. So they'll be paying the $25 per month for each plan for the K A 500 and the K A 1,000. The high deductible health plan for employee only will be at no cost. If you are family coverage and you move from the other two plan, from the K A 500 to the high deductible, you can save upwards of about $300 per month on your premium of what's being deducted out of your check. That's how much a difference it is in the premium from going from one plan to another. And again, it won't work for everybody, but some people will be able to benefit from moving from that plan and they'll still get that $500 to help them cover that cost of those first dollar coverage amounts. So again, we are willing at Pierce Group to provide you with any type of resources and education that we can to help people understand what that plan looks like. And the goal is just to change employees' behavior. Because if you have a 10 and a half percent increase this year, we want to try to get employees to start being more consumer-driven on their health plan. We want to keep good benefits so they still have the option to stay where they are if they want to. But we do want to give those employees that do want to try to take more control of their healthcare costs to have that option and go into that high deductible health plan and cushioning that for them.
And can I just add one thing too? In the past, when we looked at something like this, it really wasn't attainable because the high deductible plan meant that at minimum, you were looking at a deductible of $10,000. So what is the deductible at this point? Are you going to get?
Yeah, I would get to that.
I thought it was here.
I had it, but I didn't put it in the presentation, but.
That's okay, but we can mention.
So yeah, the deductible on this plan is going to be 2,800. So initially, when high deductible health plans came out, the deductible was $5,000. It was set by the IRS. So we don't really have, you know, any control over that. But everybody said that was way too high. Nobody's Oprah Bill Gates. So the IRS lowered that your deductible can be anything over 1,400. The local choice chose 2,800 because they felt like that was a happy medium. And then, like I said, so with the 2,800, we found that most people are able to manage that, especially with that $500 to help start them off. And if you're saving that $25 a month that you would have been paying on the K A 100 or five, I mean, 1,000 or 500, you can also put that money into your account and it helps build that account up if that's something that the employee wants to do. So it makes it very more manageable. Also, when you go to the doctor, a lot of doctors will let you put a down payment. So they'll say, oh, well, just pay me $25 and then we'll go get a price. And then they'll send you an invoice and you still can use your debit card to pay that invoice when it comes in the mail. So it makes it really easy for you to use it. And of course, you don't have to pay that $2,800 on the first doctor's visit. So they'll let you break that up.
So 2,800, is that per family, per person?
That is per person, up to two people in the family. Yeah. So if you had a family of four, that first person gets up to 2,800, but it's no more than 5,200 for the whole family. And then that is also, it's in a bucket. So if you get one person that spends 800, it goes into the bucket. If another person spends 1,000, it goes into the family bucket, but that one person won't spend more than $2,800 on their own. Yeah, that's a great question. So like I said, we do have some educational materials that we can start sending out through email. We can start sending videos. We can have videos posted to the intro web that you already have access to. They will talk about case management. They still have access to nurse lines. It doesn't have any costs. Telemedicine is still offered where they can go online and, you know, see a doctor on their phones or their tablet. And of course, the voluntary benefits, we'll still emphasize that because if you get a wellness, like checkup, or you get like your biometric screen is done for wellness, you still get that $50, but that $100 from Colonial that you also can use to put money into your HSA that actually will help out with building up your account. And we'll make sure we have all that education with the benefit counselors during open enrollment.
And that's another great point. So since we've been really looking at this, we've been designing our wellness program and incentives. We have teacher wellness grants so we can really incentivize wellness and healthy habits by helping put deposits in accounts when people display those healthy behaviors or did their well check or preventative screenings or whatever it is that we're trying to encourage and then help put money into that HSA account for employees. So that's another way to incentivize.
We may may be able to use our telehealth as our own telehealth for our own employees that would benefit them as well, correct?
We could, yeah.
You definitely could. You definitely can use our telemedicine, um, health to kind of offset some of that cost and promote that as well with that particular benefit. And again, I don't want to like scare anybody and think that we're giving the taking the other choices away. They still have the opportunity to stay on the current, the current plan as they still have the opportunity to keep their co-pay plans if they want. This is just an option that's always been there. Just people just haven't, you know, taken part of it to be able to take advantage of it. So is there any additional questions before I talk about some of the resources available?
Could you just talk about how how it, you said, you said that it rolls over the money that and the and the school and as well as as well as the individual? Could you talk about how along it will roll over and what?
Yeah, so it rolls over until.
Happens not to use much of it.
Yeah.
Do they ever get it?
Great question. So it rolls over until you turn age 65. Once you turn 65, then you no longer have the, you don't have the parameters of qualified medical expenses. So you can put money in it. Rappahannock County Public Schools can put money in it. You can use it for dental, vision, copays, deductible. Once you turn 65, if you want to go buy yourself a boat, a flat-screen TV, you know, buy the grandkids tickets to Disney. You can actually use that money after you turn 65 with no parameters around it. The only parameter around it after you turn 65 is whatever your income taxes is. You get assessed an income because now it becomes part of your income. But other than that, you can use it for whatever you want to at 65. The other thing is, say, for instance, you put money in it and you trot it out this year. You say, you know what? Don't like it. I don't like the way it works. It's not my thing. You say, I'm gonna go back to the co-pay plan next year. Any money that you have in your bank account, you still can use that money for copays and deductibles. If you go back to your other traditional plan, you just can't put any more money into that bank account. So you can spend it out on qualified medical expenses. You just can't contribute anything. I'll use myself in an example. Before I moved to Pierce Group, I had another job with an HSA. I had about $4,000 saved up in it. But my previous job didn't have a high deductible health plan, so I couldn't put any money in it. I was able to use that money out of it to pay for copays, dental expenses. It took me four years to spend down my HSA account. And I didn't, then now I have access to another HSA account. So I think I got $10 left in the one I had six years ago. And now I have money in the current one that I can use. But if I was ever to leave Pierce Group or leave this position, I would still be able to spend that money down because it is my money. It goes wherever I go.
And it would go with you if you retired as well?
It goes with you if you retire as well. Yeah, it is your bank account. Yeah.
And what I guess what we, what the school system would put into that as an incentive, that stays with you as well?
That stays with you as well. So once you send that money out, it belongs to the employee. So they get to keep it. So it's just like you put money into their checking account or savings account. Once it's gone, it's in there, it's a gift. Thank you for being a great employee.
Interest-bearing to some extent.
It is. So depending on which bank you use, because you choose a bank, once you get, some banks, if you get up to $1,500 and some banks have a $2,000 minimum, once you get to that minimum, you actually can invest it in stocks and bonds and any interest you receive on that account is tax-free as well.
Really?
Yes. It's a great plan. It's just people don't take the time to really understand it.
People are probably afraid of it.
They're very afraid. Yes.
Well, again, the verbiage that we used to use in high deductible, because we studied this years ago when we had a big hoopla about insurance and it, that was why it was, you couldn't touch it for those high deductible plans for under 10,000. If you had more than two people in your household, and everyone was like, no way.
No, not not going to take that risk.
Yeah, yeah. But they made it, they made it way more manageable now and providers are now used to it. So they're willing to work out that payment plan with you. I mean, I broke my arm during the pandemic because somebody told me I should take up a hobby and I thought roller skating would be great. And so that wasn't great for when you're older in age or more seasoned, I should say. Your balls are less flexible. So I broke my arm on my high deductible health plan. I went to the doctor. It cost me $1,500. I said, well, you know, I'm putting $50 in a pay period. I told my my facility, the invoice billing people, I only get $50 in my HSA every. I only get fifty dollars in my HSA every month, so I'll pay you the, when they kid my bank account, I'll pay you the fifty dollars. They was like, that's fine. So I just set up a payment plan that once the fifty dollars come into my HSA, fifty dollars goes out and pays the facility. Like a bank draft, because you can set that up on your account as well, because it has online banking. Are there any more questions? So just to wrap it up, that they have a Sydney app that you can do online that actually can, um, you can look up the cost of medications, procedures, so you can actually know before you go. Um, and then, of course, you also have the Live Health Online. It's zero. That doesn't cost anything. The people can go and visit, you know, providers online through telemedicine. And of course, you got the one here, Rappahannock, that employees can use. And again, like I said, we'll make sure that we do all the education that we can with our website, our call center, the booklet, open enrollment, the PowerPoint, the one-on-ones. We'll make sure we include all this information on every channel we can think of. In case people have questions, so.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
No problem. Thank you.
Steve has been wonderful. And Pierce Group, I don't know what we ever did without them because product that they put out and the education for employees and the one-to-one service has just been phenomenal. So we appreciate you. Thank you. All right. Next on the reports of the superintendent is Dr. Bolt, who is going to give you an update about the grounds and landscaping that uh, has been going on or will be going on.
So I just want to say, this is my favorite time of the year because I'm getting geared up for everything. And this year is exciting because we're starting a little earlier. So there was a collaboration between Rapflow, the Friends of the Rappahannock, and Rappahannock County Public Schools about redoing our landscaping in the front of the school and the sides. Friends of the Rappahannock were able to provide us with uh, landscape design artists, their knowledge of plants and the, the cost, the wholesale cost of the plants. Rapflow provided us the funds to have it professionally installed and their knowledge of local plants. And then the school system is purchasing the plants and we're just grateful to work with this group of people because it has been incredible. So landscape artists came out and Rachel and I and Friends of the Rappahannock met with them, her. And the goal was to get um, native plants, perennials that wouldn't be high growing because of security. Um, so that we had perimeters of what we wanted in, around our school. And this is the side, this is her drawing that she came up with. It's when you're coming down that right side of the school where there's, there's trees and some, not much there right now. So this will be the side of the school. And there's HVAC, so they had to work around that. But it, I'm pretty excited to have a finished product there. I think it's gonna help a lot when you pull up to the school to see that. And if we go on down to the next one, this was, this is, this is the most exciting part for me. Because when we were talking, I said, wouldn't it, the kids, we have a outdoor classroom out back in the woods. It's in different times of the years, the ticks get really bad and teachers don't want to go out there. Plus it is a hike for kids and teachers. So I said, wouldn't it be nice to have a secret garden classroom on the playground? And this is what we came up with. Um, so it's gonna be enclosed by plantings. And then the, if you've ever seen our playground, it's that far back playground fence. And then where the gate is, so we're gonna do plantings all through there. I've ordered um, desktop benches that convert up into the desktop. And then we'll have a exterior whiteboard with a shade structure so the teachers can go out there and actually teach on these nice days like today. But it's far enough away from the action and enough privacy that they can actually conduct class. And then the next slide is the front of the school. So everything that's out there will be, my favorite cat in the hat shrub that is dying, it will be gone. And um, this will be replaced with low level shrubs. So that the obstruction, I know the sheriff's office is very happy with this. Um, but they were so receptive to what, what we were saying and they listened. And I think the plan is great. Um, I have the list of plants. They're already in stock. And then uh, Garcia's Tree Service has been contracted to do it. So we used a local company. And they're actually starting on the week of Earth Week, April nineteenth. And Rachel and I have had conversations and I've talked to Bethany Bostic about getting students involved with some of the mulching and the spreading, that type of thing to make them feel a part of the process.
This says you'll be completed that week. You not could do all that in one week?
Yes, it will be completed in that week.
You come to my house.
When, when, when Rito gets a crew out there, he gets it done. Yes, it will be completed that week.
Oh, okay.
That's gonna be awesome. Yeah. Yeah, it's exciting. It'll be so many more colors and textures out there.
And, yeah, they're deer resistant. You know, we wanted things that the deer wouldn't eat. That, so it's just, I'm just very excited because it's gonna change the whole front look of our school.
Yeah, it's exciting. It'll.
Yeah.
Thank you for working.
Anybody have any questions?
Yeah, what about the upkeep?
Well, we, we did the um, part of the contract with Rito is to ensure that the things live and to because we can't put something else on our custodians. They have so much to do now. So the company that we landscape, that does our mowing now, they actually pull weeds for us. And they maintain it and remulch it and they do that three times a year. So we have a system in place to keep it maintained.
Is Roy pulling?
No, um, he did not get the bid. It's called Joe's Landscaping. He lives in, Joe Pear Gore. He lives in Castleton.
Okay. Oh, I know who that is.
So they're actually doing that now. They got the bid.
Yeah, and part of the Rapflow expenses, that maintenance plan that.
Right, and because they help us in the courtyard also. So it's a great, great community involvement effort. And then we'll get the students involved and it's just exciting. It's just something, spring has sprung and here we are. And it's just great to coincide with Earth Day. We couldn't have planned for a better time.
It's true. Hope for sun.
I'll take whatever we get. I'm just excited to be getting rid of my cat in the hat. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rob.
I, I, I'm sure Rachel had a lot to do with this plan.
Yeah, it was, it's fun. It's exciting. It's, the way we present ourselves is really important and the way people feel when they walk into our school, if it's vibrant and alive, it feels that way inside too, so.
All right, um, the next item on the reports is um, the special education annual plan. So Dr. Johnson, if you can give us an update about that?
Good evening and thank you for the opportunity to share a little bit about um, our special education program along with the annual plan this evening. I usually just kind of go right through that first slide, but I was looking at it this evening. Learning knows no bounds and I wish I would have changed it to say, learning knows no limits. Because I think for the last two and a half years, um, our school division has learned that there are no limitations to what we can do to serve our students. So we'll um, begin with just a little bit of data. And as far as the data, there's always kind of like that good news and that not so good news. So we've been poised for the last two and a half years to see what's gonna happen with our special education numbers based on um, the, the effects of COVID. We know that students have experienced a learning loss. And so that of course, you know, alarms people and that increases the number of referrals that go into special education services. So in um, December of this past school year, two thousand and twenty-one, um, we had a hundred and eleven special education students identified. So that was pretty much on par. We had one hundred and eight last year, so that number was hanging pretty steady. So felt good about that. We have seen an increased number of referrals from pri- private schools this year. Um, we've also continued to see an increase in numbers of referrals for speech language issues. Just in this past semester, we've identified thirteen new students for that area. So that's, you know, in a small school division, that's a, a pretty large number. Um, on the good side, we did see a decrease in the number of students who were homeschooled and requesting to receive special education stu- services. So those students are coming back into the school. Um, as of today, we have one hundred and twenty-three students who are identified for services. So when we add in those speech service students, um, and we add in some of the um, increased behavioral issues that have arisen as a result of the pandemic, you know, our numbers are increasing. That number stays pretty fluid because as we get to the end of this school year, we'll graduate some special education students. So we'll kind of get back down to our norms. So, you know, I'm not hugely alarmed right now, but you know, that's just kind of the way the numbers work. Um, we currently have five students pending eligibility. Last year at this time, we had eleven. So we've been working really hard, you know, to be sure that we're getting those services in places quickly as we can. And then um, we have had increased school referrals for out placements in private day settings or residential settings this year, um, typically based on mental health needs for students. So we've had six students last year that were in this type of placement. But some of those students were placed by other agencies in the county, not just the school. And this year as a school, we've, we've had six of those referrals. So as I said, the data is kind of a mixed bag. So just a quick reminder, um, we are required to present this annual plan to the school board each year, recognizing our responsibility to oversee these sites um, for the benefits of our special education students to supplement their educational services and not supplant the school services. So moving on to the big number, two hundred and twenty thousand, eight hundred and seventy-nine dollars, which is a little bit less, around two thousand dollars less than what we had last year. So there are no big changes in what we're proposing. We'll continue to fund two paraprofessionals and their benefits, partial funding for the school psychologist, funding for physical occupational therapy, funding for I E P counseling, partial funding for the position of the executive director of special education. And then a little nuance in here, there's a private school set aside. So how, however many students are enrolled in private school that are eligible for special education services, we have to set aside money in our plan in case there's a service that we need to provide for them. And typically, our school division provides speech language services and then consultation for other disabilities. So this year, they, when I've done the, the grant, it's set aside. It calculates itself how much is supposed to be set aside for the students. So for six students, it is twenty-three thousand, nine hundred and forty-eight dollars and some change this year. Last year it was half that much for the same number of students. So I have no idea why, you know, it's gone up so much for the private school students. Maybe that's something I need to call V D O E about. Then we'll also um, continue to fund materials and supplies for our special needs population. Uh, for the um, early childhood program, we also received separate funds for them to support our little ones. So that amount was sixty-six hundred and thirty dollars. So um, just a quick overview of our accomplishments this year. And I don't mind telling you, it's been quite the year and to put any accomplishments up there. I was very proud to be able to put some up. So we did meet our um, report card benchmarks um, that get sent to us each year by the Virginia Department of Education. We were able to continue to provide support for our virtual students via Zoom, phone calls, um, some additional home-based instruction this year that we haven't utilized in the past. Parent involvement in our meetings continues to be very good at this point due to the option of Zoom. So that's one good thing that came out of the pandemic. It gives our parents more of a, of, an opportunity to be able to join us for those meetings. We've also been able to expand opportunities for remediation this year through creative scheduling and bringing in some former staff members who have retired perhaps, who still want to be involved with the children. So we've been able to support remediation through that model. We've also been able to provide additional opportunities to include our special needs students in the general education curriculum this year, especially in grades three through twelve. There's been a very big emphasis on that. And then um, lastly, we had zero dropouts for the special needs population for two thousand nineteen and twenty, which is always good to see. So looking ahead, um, of course, continuing to close those gaps um, that have occurred due to the um, pandemic. We'll address that through extended school year services for our special needs students over the summer. Continue with our professional development. Also, a focus on graduating special education students with a standard or advanced diploma. That piece um, was one area where we did not meet the benchmark for two thousand and nineteen. And with everything that was going on with COVID, I think that did impact the student's ability somewhat to get that, at least that standard diploma. So we're gonna be focusing on that area. And then lastly, to continue to uh, focus our attention on performance in reading and math, the S O L accreditation piece was waived for two thousand nineteen and twenty. So that didn't reflect on my last report card, but it will be coming back. So we'll continue to focus on that. Just a quick update on our special education advisory committee group. We did hold our required four meetings this year. Our main emphasis for our group was um, planning on inclusive practices. And there's gonna be an assessment that we're gonna be required to fill out, I think it's next year from the Virginia Department of Education. But we decided to start looking at that this year so that we would be poised when we had to complete that report. We've talked as a team and with our school administration about what um, the CAC team's vision for that process is. So we feel like we're making good gains in continuing to um, include all of our students in all of our classes. Alrighty, so finally, um, I would like to um, give you a proposed roster for membership for the advisory team for next year, um, as I'm required to present you with the names. So um, our committee members, Ms. Champney will continue to be our chair. Kelly Goff is a parent and then Janet Jenkins is our teacher member. And then myself and Kathy Zer Rhodes will serve as the consultants. So don't forget to celebrate Autism Awareness Month this month and I have special autism pins to give you later on. So thank you for the opportunity. Are there any questions about this?
I just was wondering if you could define inclusive practices a little more, that area of improvement you were talking about?
Yes. So inclusive practices is including our special education students who have an I E P, making sure that they are in their general education classroom for as high a percent of the day as they can possibly be in there.
And be successful.
Yeah.
Right. So, so that, so then someone could, if they're a fourth grader, they might go into their fourth grade math class with their whole class. Is that the kind of idea you're talking?
Right. And the majority of our students are already participating with that type of model. What typically happens is if we take a student who perhaps needs additional support with math and, you know, it's, it's kind of been the process in the past of, well, this student needs such modifications that they need to have a separate math class that's more appropriate for their level. So the goal is that that student is gonna be in their general education classroom, getting that general education curriculum, even if it needs to be modified or even if they need extra support to be able to access that. And it, it's, it can be done when your teachers work together, when your special education teachers and your general classroom teachers work together, um, co-teach, break the class into small groups. You know, it's, it's a wonderful thing to see happen and we, we've made gains in that. We want to keep that focus going in that direction.
Yeah, no, that makes a lot of sense. I think it's, and you, you might have an aide together with, with a special ed student in the class or something like that.
Yes.
Makes sense. Thank you.
Is it possible, or do we uh, have time for special ed instructors to plan with the general ed instructors for specific kits?
We, we do our best. That's one of the things that, like, if we have our early release days and our professional days, that's one reason in the calendar, we like to try to include more of those early release days so that teachers have that opportunity for collaboration. It gets really squirrely with the way that the um, planning schedules work for the, the different grade levels right now. But you know, that is something that we will continue to strive to, you know, make sure that they have that opportunity. Because that is the way that this inclusive.
That's how it works.
Practices are going to happen.
Yeah.
Yeah. And then um if a, like, if a parent had, who might, whose student might not have been in 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 the regular classroom, a special ed parent. How how do they access the the new teacher? You know, that if there's a regular classroom teacher that their student isn't usually in? How do they, how does that happen? Like, if you know, like, maybe like as a parent of a younger child, for example, I was like. I would go through and look at the website and figure out what the assignments were and and be able to help just understand what what.
Well, I think the.
Being studied that week for, you know.
The IEP process, when the parents come in and go through the individual education plan. So I think that's going to spell out very clearly for the parents so that they know what setting their child is going to be receiving the instruction in. Um, so that they know for sure which teacher to go to, which teacher's responsible for that.
Thank you. Also really important, that team will determine together what accommodations are appropriate in whatever setting. So that's really useful to to uh work through that with the parents.
If it's a thorough IEP, everything will be quite, everything will be spelled out.
Yeah.
Uh, so it's easy to to see.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Dr. Johnson. Um, the next item is the CTE Annual Plan, the Career and Technical Education. Um, and this is the Perkins Plan. Uh, so that is uploaded for you. Mr. Tupper um manages that plan. It's about thirteen thousand dollars and then a application that's about fifty pages long. So if you want to read through that, you are welcome to. Uh, but the Perkins Funds do uh support a lot of our equipment upgrades. For our career and tech ed departments at this time. That's what it's primarily used for. Um, we receive other state-funded um Botech funds as well um for uh career certification testing, credentialing. Uh, professional development for teachers um and and those sort of things. But it's a pretty small amount for what's being accomplished for career and tech. Any questions about that? Okay. And then um really quick well check. Rappahannock County Schools is doing really well. Um, just an overview of our previous dashboards. Um, in February. Uh, we had two cases at the elementary. And then March, it dropped down to one. And then our last dashboard had zero. Um, but it it's still around. I know that because I, my kids will get general exposure notices every now and then. So um I'm sure when the new dashboard's updated, um, we'll have another case there, um, pop up at least. But. Uh, so it's still around. We're still watching those cases very carefully, still contact tracing and sending out general exposure notices. Just to let people know to be careful and and watch for any symptoms.
I think that's really important for the public to know that that we are still contact tracing because nobody else is.
No, a lot of the other school districts did um stop doing that. And VDH said they're going to stop doing that unless there's a ten percent ratio of your staff. That actually has had exposure or an outbreak to that level.
And we're still using our same matrix.
Yes, we are. Yeah. Uh, so we're using the same procedures and CIS team. Um, it is our um number one uh modality to. See how COVID is transmitted in the school building and to stop it in its tracks if we know exactly where it came from and who's exposed. If you don't know that, it's very difficult to contain.
My first family COVID, I had three kids that got COVID. They're all grownups, so.
Oh. Fortunately, it does. It does continue to occur. Um, but the state data is looking really good, um, staying pretty low. I have seen um that there are um some upticks in certain areas in the country that are watching. But the amount of uh antibodies and the immunity and vaccination rates are coming back up. So uh the rates are still low in our area. Um, in Rappahannock, we did see that uptick, but they um put out a statement about their backlog cases are being entered. So to watch for that as well. So the Rappahannock Rapid Inn, uh, Health District. Uh, so of course, we're still, the CDC is using the new community transmission metrics to determine whether or not a community is low, medium, or high. Um, and I just provided that again, just as a reminder, and then the link to the CDC site. And that is what we're using now to determine community transmission. Um, this was our last chart. So Madison and Rappahannock did come back up into medium. Uh, based on that CDC chart, everywhere around us is low. Um, so I expect it will stay around low, medium and. Uh, teeter totter between those throughout the spring and summer months if it follows the same trajectory as we've seen before. So again, mitigations, uh, and response measures we still have in place, HVAC upgrades, UV decontamination, air scrubbing systems. We're keeping those clean, the filters clean and making sure they're serviced. Added layers of deep cleaning and disinfecting by our custodial staff. We still do our daily health screenings and check in for our staff. Contact tracing, case tracking and data gathering is still going on and we still maintain our database with all of that. Um, KN ninety-five masks are still available for any staff or students who wish to use them at any time. Um, and we also have free test kits available for students and staff if they meet certain risk criteria. Um, and then, of course, our wellness center has been wonderful as a really first response to um any symptoms that we see with.
The snipples.
Anything. So that's been a a great benefit to the community, um, to our students. Uh, we also are providing the mental health services through Health Connect America through referrals. Um, and then, of course, the Fit Kids Clinic right across the, right around the corner, right there, um, for our telehealth visits. And that's the well check for right now. Any questions?
Anybody have questions?
Sorry.
Moving right along?
Yeah, moving right along. Then um.
Five point one, report from Headwaters representative.
See, I I um heard from Brittany. I was busy. And um, yeah, so here is the Headwaters report. After school has seventy-six children enrolled for this session. They're also supporting forty kids at the elementary school who are in remediation program and they're receiving snack from Headwaters. So that's a lot of kids eating after school. Um, and the final session ends on May twelfth. There are ten people enrolled so far in the summer chorus and it remained, the enrollment remains open until May fifteenth. And um you can sign up on their website. It's fifty dollars per child for a two-week program and scholarships are available. Um, Starfish has ten active mentoring pairs now. And they're planning the next field trip to go roller skating, but not breaking arms next month. We're in the need of any male mentors at this time. So need more men to step up to that. The Read Program is back at the elementary school and volunteers are working with seven students in just kindergarten through second grade. To support them with reading and writing. And hopefully it'll grow as um as as it gets back going again. And Headwaters has has distributed over ten thousand dollars in educational enrichment grants so far this school year. They keep receiving requests for transportation for educational field trips that require charter buses. And they're hoping to work with the schools to collaborate for those big tip ticket items. And the scholarship committee is going to meet this month, um, after having received their applications. And they'll determine recipients for scholarships. And it'll be May twelfth when those um awards will be given. That's that. Thanks, Brittany.
Alright. Uh, Mountain Vista Governor's School did not meet last month. We will meet in April. So that takes care of that. Uh, VSBA policy updates. Did the policy committee have an opportunity to look at the?
I read.
Multitude of policy updates?
I read every last one of them.
Oh, Ms. Myers, I'm proud of you.
I don't trust them. And they're all okay. Like, if we get sued, we're.
They all look good. Okay. Mr. Uber?
It's supposed to clean up.
All good. Okay. That's true. Public comment. Is there anyone that wishes to make a comment for the good of the cause? Seeing no hands, we'll move right along. Can I get a motion to approve the special ed annual report?
So moved.
It's been moved?
Second.
And seconded? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. Approved for the CTE Local Plan. Motion?
So moved.
Ms. Bynum? Ms. Meyer? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Approved? None here. Approval for VSBA Annual Policy Updates.
So moved.
Ms. Meyer?
I'm going.
Say it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
New business. Uh, I'd like to make mention of the uh seventh grade career clusters. These are phenomenal. I don't know where the public can see them, but maybe we can put a stamp, a couple of samples at the public library or something like that?
That would be great. I know um Holly Jenkins was at the fair and took some great pictures, so she will blast that out to everybody. But the assignment um was run through our profile of a graduate team, the POG team, and Jenny Capso with the seventh grade teachers. Um, and the idea was sort of like a science fair, but exploring careers and what career fields kids were interested in. And then they had to do research about the educational track, um, what it takes to become whatever it is that they were.
Ticket needs to be punched.
Yes, exactly. And then what the salary range was. And then they also had to make brochures to go with their board. And it was so great to see some of the kids. I know um one child I saw was dressed as a as a police officer. And then we had some military uh children. One child even brought in his dirt bike to be a dirt bike mechanic. And so I was like, wow, these kids are taking this very seriously. So uh that's the whole of, you know, uh, trajectory of the life readiness that we're trying to explore, starting early.
That is great. That is, that is good stuff. Uh, do you, could you take a minute and review the uh CTE California experience?
Yes. Mr. Yeuman and I and uh Mr. Seward, the principal at the high school, and Michelle Fincham, our Ag Academy Coordinator. And Holly Jenkins all um had the pleasure to go visit San Diego, California, um, and to present at the National School Board Association uh Conference. Uh, and we had four different presentations, a lot um about this new model. Um, and I say new, thinking that it's certainly cannot be new about life readiness and um the model we're using. But it was really novel. And I think that surprised all of us because, and that's what the National School Board Association said when they visited us. We've been around the entire country, but we haven't seen this conceptual framework adopted in this way. Where we're not presuming every child is going to have each of the tenants of vocation and credentialing, certification, dual enrollment credit, college readiness. All of that together, we're doing a tier-one life readiness intervention to give that to all kids that graduate from this uh community. So that in and of itself was a shift because it's either you're on this track or you're on that, or you're going to four-year, you're, you know, uh, by having the entire package. Um, and we got to present about that in the uh academy model, the three E's, uh, the wellness program, Commit to be Fit. So we had opportunities to do that and talk to some really great people and educators across the country, from around the country about it. Um, and so so that was wonderful. Uh, it really was brought to life though, I think, when I was speaking to some of the uh businesses that visited our school last week. For the career fair at the high school. And our, all of our juniors and seniors went through this career fair. And uh, I I guess of the those businesses that were represented, there were over eighty jobs available for our students. And I was speaking with the um manager at uh Airly in Fall Care County. And he could, he was just so excited. He could not believe are the majority, and this is his words, the majority of our students that came through. And he said, I've been in HR for forty years and I just came from graduate school, um, career fairs like this one, and I've already hired three of your kids over them. I was like, really? And he said, it's not the stuff that they know. Like, you can know academics and sometimes it's like really robotic in some of the people that he was interviewing. But he said, your your kids, they know how to shake my hand and look me in the eye and present themselves with confidence. And they just have this genuine demeanor that's really kind and compassionate. He said, I can't train that.
So that was beautiful to to hear. And that was echoed throughout the the career fair. So yeah, it was great.
As part of that culture we're going to develop.
Sure.
Yeah. That's great.
Mr. Yeuman, did you want to say anything?
No, it was um, it was, it's impressive to see some of the kids, when when you talk to them, they were on the track to do this, or they assumed they would become that. And they get into FFA, they get into the Ag Academy, get through Health Science Academy, and suddenly, I want to be a phlebotomist, I want to be a coroner. I want to be this or that, you know, I I want to do forensic examination. It's amazing to watch their eyes light up and they switch. We also need to be very careful because like Arrowhead is trying to recruit Dr. Grimsley to come be their superintendent because they like the program so much. They want, they took, what, forty-five minutes to an hour after the last session of of, you know, of Holly presenting? To ask her, you know, how do you do it? How'd you get the funds for it? How do you present it? How did you, you know, get it started? They were all about um wanting Dr. Grimsley to come out and visit the area and see how nice the lake is. A gentleman from Texas was what, you know, was talking about maybe having having her and some others come down and and present to his school. A gentleman from Oklahoma wanted the same thing. It's, it seems very simple, but apparently it's very radical for some other places where. The people that I talk to, you know, we're we're still pushing kids, you know, college, just go to college. You'll figure it out. You get the, go to college, go to college. It's not for everybody. Um, so a lot of people, you can see their eyes light up and they get real interested. And after the the big presentation, ten, twenty people were coming forward, wanting to talk to somebody about about it and learn more. So.
Oh, y'all just stay home, will you?
Uh-huh.
Just stay home?
But I hold on to them. Like, Arrowhead looked pretty nice.
Well, that's great. You should, I I think we're all really proud of 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 what Rappahannock County Public Schools does to start with. And then uh to throw it out to the country, that's another goal. There you go. Alright, our next regular meeting is May tenth. And uh do I hear a motion to move into closed session?
I move that the board convenes in closed session for the following purpose. To discuss and consider the appointment of staff for professional positions, classified position, coaching positions, retirement of a professional position. And discussion of the superintendent's evaluation pursuant to Virginia Code Section two point two dash three seven one one subsection A, paragraph one.
Ms. Yarier, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. What's our timeframe?
Shouldn't take more than ten minutes.
Ten minutes?
Yes.
You can stay or you can go. Or the uh personnel report consisted of some teaching positions and some coaching positions. And.
Oh, so so we do need a motion for that, right?
Yes.
I I didn't, I didn't highlight that.
Okay.
Sorry.
I'm sorry. My fault.
No.
We need a motion to approve the personnel report.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Um, did everybody certify?
Chris Yeuman certified.
Rachel Bynum certified.
Tyra Grob certified.
Lucian Meyer certified.
There we go. Anything else to do with the cause? I'll move to a jury.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Three ten time.